I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sean, would you please listen for this prayer? Dear heavenly Father, thank you for this beautiful day and this warm weather we've had. Pray that you guide and direct us in everything that we say and that we do as we conduct city business. Thank you for this community and thank you for all that you do for us. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Next item up is roll call. I am present. Alderman Williams.
Present.
Alderman Bordeck.
Present.
Alderman Williams is absent. Alderwoman Siskiho.
Present.
City administrator Burbidge.
Present.
City court fellow.
Present.
City attorney Weber.
Present.
Chief of police Chase.
Present.
Finance director Stacy Houston.
Present.
And our other city staff we have present here. We have Brian from the street department and Johnny Moore from the wastewater. Next item up is the approval of the agenda. I'd move to approve the agenda.
I'll second.
So I'm gonna call for the vote. Alderman Bordeck.
Yes.
Alderwoman Siskiho.
Yes.
And Alderman Williams.
Yes.
Next item up is the consent agenda. I don't think we have one. No?
Yeah.
Alright, next item up is public comment. How many citizens did we hear for pu- for public comment?
I didn't have anyone fill out any papers.
Oh, okay. Just checking, never hurts. That was the first time. Oh, yeah. Next up item up is our fiscal year for two thousand and twenty-three audit. Miss Krista, are you good for going up?
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
I have every hand a copy and I've seen a lot of familiar faces, so I know you know how this works, so I'll go through it pretty quickly, but wave at me if you want me to slow down, okay? Um, this is your audit report for fiscal year ending June thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-three. On page one, define the independent auditor's report. It's three pages of information, but what it says is that after performing the audit procedures, I feel that these financial statements are fairly stable, okay? Those statements get started on page five. With the statement of net position. This shows you your assets liabilities and net position for the city as a whole. It's broken down between governmental activities and business type activities, and then the city as a whole is on the far right column. So looking at that total column, this shows you that on June thirtieth, the city had assets of thirty-one million five hundred and forty-one thousand, deferred outflows of resources of four hundred and forty-two thousand, total liabilities of ten million nine hundred and fifty-five thousand, deferred inflows of resources of a hundred and fifty-seven thousand, and that leaves you with the remaining net position of twenty million eight hundred and seventy-one thousand, okay? The next statement shows you the revenues and the expenses for the fiscal year. This is also separated between governmental and business type activities, but it goes a step further. And on the left side of the statement, you'll see it's broken down by major function or program, um, to show you how those departments kind of perform on their own before you add in general revenues, okay? But on page seven, the third line from the bottom, and this will be our theme for evening, but that shows you your change in net position for the year. So for example, if your governmental activities had an increase of six hundred and fifty-three thousand, and your business type activities had an increase in net position of one million six hundred and seventy-three thousand, okay? Statement three is your balance sheet for your governmental funds. So this breaks down the assets liabilities and fund balances for your individual governmental funds, and then the total comes back to what we looked at on statement one, okay? But this gives you the breakdown between funds. On statement four, you'll see the revenues and the expenditures for those governmental funds, broken down in more detail, and those totals go back to what we looked at on statement two, okay? But this works the same way. The third line from the bottom shows you the net change and fund balance for the year. For example, general is showing an increase of fifteen thousand five seventy-five, park an increase of almost two hundred and thirty thousand, and so on, okay? Statement five is the statement of net position for your business type activities. So this is similar to statement one, but broken down by individual fund. Statement six shows you the revenues and expenses for those same business type activities, okay? So the third line from the bottom shows you the net change. Electric is showing an increase of one million four hundred and seventy-one thousand, water an increase of a hundred and sixty-one thousand, and so on, okay? The last major statement is on, um, page sixteen, pages sixteen and seventeen. This is the statement of cash flows. You are only required to prepare this for your business type activities. You're not gonna find it for general or park, okay? It's only in here for your business type activities. But it gives you an idea of what happened to your cash during the year. Shows you which activities used cash, which provided cash, and, um, the net change for the fiscal year. So it's near the middle of the page, you'll see the line that says net increase or decrease in cash. That shows you electrics cash increased, um, a little over a million dollars. Water had an increase of almost a hundred and seventy-eight thousand, and so on, okay? Uh, the next two statements are on your fiduciary funds, not, no significant changes there. But if you'll turn to page twenty, these are the notes to the financial statements. There, there are, they are long. There's twenty pages of information. Um, they, they explain the statements that we looked at, but then they also give you more detail on some of the significant balances. So you can find payment schedules for long-term debt in there. You can find, um, details on your fixed assets or capital assets, um, things like that, okay? Then at the very back, there are two blue letters. The first one, that should be on top, is what we call the report on internal controls and compliance. And this will look familiar to you. The third page is the only item that required written disclosure, and that's regarding segregation of duties. So this serves as your annual reminder that when you have a small accounting staff, and there are a few people who have access or can do most of the accounting work, you have some segregation duties issues. So just remain aware of that and look for ways to put more people into the mix or add layers of supervision when you can, things like that, okay? The other letter, um, it's to the board, and it's required at the end of the engagement. And it's supposed to start the conversation between us if there were difficulties during the audit process, if you had disagreements about accounting treatment, um, if I had trouble getting documents, things like that. So when you read it later, it's three pages to tell you everything went well, okay? It all looked really smoothly. Stacy is amazing to work with. Do you guys have any questions?
Just one, um, on page fourteen, statement six, um, where it shows the electric fund got a change in net position of one point four million. I'm assuming that's gonna be combining the reserves fund and other funds tied into electric in that column there. That's gonna be shown as, um, as putting money towards the reserves to kind of build that back in.
That includes all, I think you have it broken up into three electric funds. They're all combined there.
Electric, electricity, and electric reserve.
Yep, that's all of them.
Thank you.
What suggestions do you have, um, for us to be able to achieve a proper segregation of duties? I'm sure you've shared those with Stacy.
Well, you're not alone. Um, every city I have has this issue.
Okay.
Um, so part of the problem is when you have a limited staff, even if you have things segregated, when someone's out for a week or two weeks for vacation, other people are filling in. So they always have access, if that makes sense? Uh, one of the best things you can do with a limited staff is to provide extra layers of monitoring. So those don't, those don't always prevent issues, but they will catch them sooner.
Okay.
If that makes sense? So if we need to have conversations about things you could, um, implement, just let me know.
Stacy, will you just give me your weeks of vacation?
Well, I know it's, it's a big document to throw at you at once, so if you think of things later, just reach out. I'm always available.
Thank you so much.
Okay, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item up is man miscellaneous business. Resolution number five dash twenty twenty-four.
Resolution number five dash twenty twenty-four, a resolution authorizing the mayor to sign an addendum to the contract for flood planning administration between the city of Salem, Missouri, and the Merrimack Regional Planning Commission for Professional Services.
Thank you.
So, um, on this, so we, we had a contract in place already, um, for their MRPC to assist us with the flood plan management. Um, as all of you may recall, um, we did have an flood plan audit last summer. And so with that, as we worked through the various steps following a permanent audit, um, MRPC staff have assisted us through walking through those steps. Um, we have two, I think, two property owners that we're still working with to get them into compliance. Um, and so MRPC has been working with us to help us achieve those goals. So to that end, they have exhausted, the contract was for four thousand dollars for the year for their assistance. So they've exhausted those funds because of the audit and the extra work that was involved. So they're asking for, um, an additional three thousand to close out the rest of this year.
I'm open to a discussion. I don't have any questions. No, I don't.
I would move to approve, uh, resolution five dash twenty twenty-four, uh, for the amendment, uh, to contract for flood plan administration at MRPC.
I'll second. This time I'll call for the vote. Alderman Williams.
Yes.
Alderman Bordeck.
Yes.
And Alderwoman Siskiho.
Yes.
Next item up is resolution number six dash twenty twenty-four.
Resolution number six dash twenty twenty-four, a resolution authorizing the mayor to renew an agreement between the city of Salem, Missouri and the Department of Health and Senior Services for the purpose of sewer shed disease trend monitoring. This is a contract we've been doing for the last few years since the epidemic of COVID, where we sampled sewer, um, yeah. To see when, it tells us when we have upticks of various diseases in the community, things like that. So, and we are reimbursed for each sample.
Are they still reimbursing them?
Yes.
Okay, so they're continuing the program? I just don't want us to get caught like, oh yeah, we defunded that program and then have to foot the bill or, you know, still go.
I'd move to approve resolution number six dash twenty twenty-four.
I'll second.
Further discussion? I'll call for the vote. Alderman Bordeck.
Yes.
Alderwoman Siskiho.
Yes.
And Alderman Williams.
Yes.
Next item up is resolution number seven dash twenty twenty-four.
Resolution number seven dash twenty twenty-four, a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement by and between the city of Salem, Missouri and utility service partners, private label incorporated, doing business as service line warranties of America for sewer and water line laterals between the meters and residential private property. So this agreement before you, this is for the, uh, protection that homeowners would contact the company directly to purchase, if they want to participate in it. Um, so this is coverage of the eighty-five hundred per line leak. This is to actually fix the leak itself. Um, again, we wouldn't have involvement, our involvement, that's why this agreement is a royalties agreement. It would unite our logo, basically stating that we endorse this program. So that they would use in their educational mailers and anything. This was reviewed, um, by the utility committee in December and was recommended for a pickup.
This is the one where they, their customer or their citizen offices here?
Right.
Right. It's just not something that's mandatory?
And so coverage is there's an unlimited number of calls with a maximum of eighty-five hundred per currents for exterior water and sewer line and/or sewer line replacement, and then up to three thousand per currents for in-home maintenance.
Yeah, this is the in, in-home, you know, this is the repair program.
Right, correct.
Yeah.
That's the bill, the program.
Yeah, uh, this one was originally reviewed in December, I believe. So, yeah, during the December, uh, it was unanimous, like, being that it's an optional program, you know, it was unanimous, like, going to just be an option, you know? But, uh, basically just allowing the, uh, the company to use the city logo on that head to, uh, put information out about it, so if people wanted it, they could go, uh, they could go and, uh, contract into it. Then, yeah, you could see some of the numbers where they were trying to sell it, and so. But it was, it was pretty quick, you know, it was a pretty quick discussion. I didn't see any, any issues with it. We didn't talk about it for about thirty minutes or so.
I think the lady mentioned that most homeowners' insurances don't have this type of.
Yeah, they don't cover the lines themselves.
They don't cover the lines themselves.
Yeah.
That's the reason why they recommended it.
This was, which one? Seven, the seven twenty twenty-four? I, yeah, I move to approve, uh, resolution seven dash twenty twenty-four, regarding the line service, service line warranties.
Good, I have a second.
I'll second.
If there's no further discussion, I'll call for the vote. Alderman Williams.
Yes.
Alderman Bordeck.
Yes.
And Alderwoman Siskiho.
Yes.
Next up is the emergency amendment for resolution number eight dash twenty twenty-three.
Resolution number eight dash twenty twenty-four, a resolution authorizing the filing of an application with the Missouri Department of Resources, state revolving fund program for loans under the Missouri Clean Water Law, chapter six forty RSM. And so the current blood service line inventory, we have a grant to do that, that's, that we have to have that inventory in by October. Um, the, the piece with that, though, is that we only have to have about ten percent of the city survey, okay? By October. So we have a grant to cover the expenses of that, and that is under contract with Archer Elgin. This application is for funding to do the rest of the city. Um, it is a limited pool of funding, and it'll pretty much be on a first come, first served. Applications are due by Friday, so that's why it was added, you know, to the agenda.
Yeah, and this is just the application.
Right, this is just the application, not a commitment.
Okay, um, do you have information on how much they're?
We do know.
Okay. I mean, there's no, no fault in, uh, sending up, yeah, putting an application. I don't see any reason for that. So I would move to approve resolution number eight dash twenty twenty-four.
I'll second.
Further discussion? I'll call for the vote. Alderman Williams.
Yes.
Alderman Siskiho.
Yes.
Alderman Bordeck.
Yes.
Next up is, uh, bids, the chain link fence.
I'm showing page fifty-seven. Oh, seven, gotcha. There we go. Okay, so this, um, this project was put out to bid. This is for fencing of a water tower and a, um, sort of well bank.
Yes, well for the old tiger tank.
Right. So this is the put-up chain link fencing, which is a newer, one of the newer requirements by DNR, where we have these fenced off. So this bid was put out, you'll see here, published in the Salem News on February sixth, um, due to the clerk, like, Friday, February twenty-second at three P M. Um, so three bids were received, and those are included in the packet. Um, you can see where the bids came out here. Below bidder Leo Morgan fencing at twenty-four thousand was actually considered non-responsive because although they had the low bid, they did not include warranty information on the fencing, which was specifically requested in the bid packet. So that leaves us with the other two diamond fence at forty-five thousand and J and M Construction fencing at twenty-nine thousand nine fifty. Um, we did have, the water department did have forty thousand budgeted for fencing this year. Did you want to add anything else, Johnny?
I would like to table this for further discussion.
Okay.
I have, can I ask a question? Are we open to speak? Um, for, um, for the bids, how can we get more local bids? Is it, I mean, how can we make it known that, what are we doing? I know that we are putting in the paper.
Right.
Um, but for contractors' purposes, for more local people, just to put it in the paper out there, what are ways to get more local businesses active with the city to keep our money within Salem? Not that I'm against, not that I'm against going outside, but if we can help a local business further their money within the city limits.
And that's the thing, we put it in the Salem News. I mean, we're not advertising in these other communities.
And you put that in the public notice area?
Yes.
I just, I just wanna put it out there that, you know, businesses that, your small business, we're a small town. Um, if you see a bid out there, look in the public notices because we want to keep local business local.
The other piece is, and again, a lot of our businesses don't utilize this, we post all of our bids that go out on our website. We have a page.
That's where I was hoping.
And they can go sign up, be automatically notified anytime we update that page.
Okay.
Now granted, they're gonna get every bid notification.
Yeah, and I know sometimes our website, if you're not using it through a computer, can be kind of complicated through a cell phone. So if they have any questions on that, they can call, and everybody's educated on the city website through the administrative's office, we hope? If not, they can ask and talk to.
To varying degrees, yeah.
You, three, you, Sally, or, um, Stacy, Tammy.
Yes, yes. One of those three can help, yeah.
Okay.
Um, but, but that is a, a feature on the website that you can go and you can sign up specifically to get updates every time we update or upload something to that page, so.
So local businesses can look in the paper and the public notices, and it's also posted on our website. So if you have any issues finding those, um, call the administrative's office, and Tammy, Sally, or Stacy, one can help direct you in the direction of how to put your bids into keep business local.
And so we do have one other piece, um, to benefit our local businesses. Um, in our procurement policy, if they're located in Dent County, they actually get a five percent preference.
Perfect.
So.
I'm just gonna add, DNR does a yearly inspection of all of our sites, and they, not just recommend it just for this, but all of our wells and water towers that they recommend chain link fencing to avoid any type of tampering with the city's water supply, so.
So at this time, I would move to, uh, recommend our public, or, um, Water Street Department's recommendation to table this, um, for a later time to be able to discuss. So we are going to, um, I'm trying to find the actual. So I'm moving to, uh, table the approval of the bids from the three contractors for the chain link fence.
I'll second that. Is this something we need to discuss immediately, or is it something that needs to be discussed, like, over time? Like, in a different meeting or something?
It's a diff, a different meeting. It's not gonna hurt to go, you know, another, another couple of weeks or three weeks.
Okay, I'm just making sure it wasn't like an immediate thing.
I'll call for the vote. Alderwoman Siskiho.
Yes.
Alderman Bordeck.
Yes.
And Alderman Williams.
Yes.
Next up is the plumbing bid.
So these plumbing bids are for the old city hall. So with the line works that we had due to freezing and then also due to age, um, with, due to the freezing, we actually had, and explains that you didn't hear some, uh, the two upstairs urinals in the men's restrooms, the valves busted. So as, as I've talked with staff, I've talked with the high set instructor or GED instructor, who's in the building actually more than anyone right now, visited with Melissa quite a bit about how the building is used. Um, we kind of came to the consensus of this is an opportunity for us to not just repair some of the issues that came about in the restrooms from that event, but actually do a few upgrades in anticipation of the building being utilized more when we do open it for movie showing. Um, so you'll see in, in the bids, you'll see there's quite, quite a bit of stuff. The, we did receive two bids I had actually spoken with and had three plumbers walk through the building. Um, I had two final bids submitted, um, and I'll just scroll forward. So this one's totaled, so a few of the things, um, like I said, some improvements. So upstairs in the main floor where the auditorium is, there has been an employee bathroom that had been locked since I've been here. I didn't know what the room was, to be honest. Um, so when we got access to it, um, it's not viable to open to the public because it has electric panels inside of that area. So that was, there's no mop floors anywhere in the mop sinks anywhere on that main floor. Um, so rather than keeping it as a bathroom, this, we figured this would be a good use that would actually provide usability to that space. Um, and so you'll see the estimate there, labor and materials, about sixteen hundred to remove the toilet and sink for vanity and install a mop sink and closet. Um, this next one, replacing the C P B C water lines with PEX water lines, this is in the backstage bathroom. Okay, this is the one that caused the flooding of the stage floor and of the council chambers. Um, that's what it has in that restroom is the old C P B C, which is notorious for giving out. Um, so let's replace that with PEX and put new, um, valves in those lines. So the next one, uh, remove and replace five urinal flush valves with sensor technology. After visiting, uh, both the staff as well as the plumbers and especially Pat Claude, who's the GED instructor of the building regularly. Um, and the fact that the building sits vacant most of the time, and unfortunately, urinals are notoriously not flushed all the time. This way, we don't have to worry about stuff sitting there and causing issues. Um, they'll automatically flush. This is for all, both men's restrooms in the basement and the main floor. So this takes care of the frozen busted flush valves as well as just upgrading the others. Um, so, okay. So here, we're not replacing the entire toilets, we are replacing the valves and then flanges and wax curtains. Um, for, these are the commercial toilets, so all of the toilets in the basement are commercial toilets. So they're not the tank type like you have in your home. So replacing those flush valves, we have several of them that leak, and so this gives us an upgrade, so everything's functioning and we're not losing water. We're not having issues in that, of that type. Um, the, the flanges, um, a lot of them, stuff's been in place long enough, they have rusted out. So this is kind of getting everything back up, up to code and, and working properly. Um, and then the inch and a half plugs in the floor drains. Um, we had, obviously, the floor drains in this building, they're eighty-five years old or almost, and a lot of the, they're cast iron, they're the original cast iron, and they have corroded shut. So we had to go ahead and pull the plugs that go kind of in the other side, uh, in order to get the floor to drain when it was flooding. So we need to replace those so that we don't have sewer smells coming up through the sewer lines. So that's the work. Um, you'll see this first valve, uh, sorry, let me explain real quick. I Xed out, we had talked about putting a tankless hot water heater in the backstage bathroom. If you think about it, everything else that uses water in that building is within twenty-five foot of the west wall, and then we have one toilet and sink on the east wall. And so I'm not sure how long it's gonna take to get hot water from the hot water heater on the east wall all the way across the building. So we had talked about it, finally, we kind of decided that maybe this was a future upgrade. Unless it was, the thing is not included in this estimate is exactly what size that tank was, what we were thinking, so flood we go. So that, so you see the two bids, this one is six thousand seven hundred and fifty. This one is six thousand seven hundred and twenty, twenty-nine, so very close. So based on that. So based on that, um, staff recommendation at this time.
And that tankless hot water heater would only do the sink, right?
Yes, only the sink, and so it's like, yeah. Any questions that you guys have?
Are they both local plumbers?
Yes, they are, they're up here in Salem.
I have another question. Oh, have we heard back on insurance yet?
Um, we, we won't, I've talked to Tony about this, we really won't until we start getting repairs done.
Okay.
And so they would not cover all of this because some of this is upgrades.
Okay.
But this is, this is one of those that I felt like, this sounds terrible, but because of what happened, we have the opportunity now to put it back better than it was and get it truly ready for more folks utilizing the space.
Let's see, we're gonna use ten thousand dollars on that design audit and stuff in the future.
Right.
What do you bring anything for that?
Well, it was going to be some weatherization, which some of that has already happened. Just when, when the lines broke, we kind of went through the building a little bit, um, and we're doing some of that. There are some other things that need to happen, um, but that's what this was originally budgeted for.
With the more, of urgent need?
Yes, yes.
Is there anything else?
No.
No.
I will move to approve the bid from Rick through Fleming of LC in the amount of six thousand seven hundred and twenty dollars and twenty-nine cents.
There's no further discussion, I'll call for the vote, Alderman Boyd Jack.
Yes.
Alderman Siskas.
Yes.
And Alderman Williams.
Yes.
Next up is the second reading of bills, bill number thirty-five eighty-nine.
Bill number thirty-five eighty-nine, an ordinance adding provisions prohibiting smoking on city properties and specifically in public parks to the codes of the city of Salem, Missouri. So these next, I believe eleven, uh, bills all deal with the non-smoking. So we, yeah, we've broken them up by section, so each deals with a different topic within the ordinance, basically this creates a separate chapter for the non-smoking. The intent is that it's, uh, in certainly city parks where we have youth activities, um, it does cover city properties, but the basic intent was public parks.
As I mentioned in previous meetings, I'm very excited for this ordinance, um, to be brought to the surface. It's been a long time discussion, um, and the parks and rec, we discussed with them and also, um, Zach Moser and they're all also pushing for this clean air, um, ordinance. And, uh, it sounds like it, you know, if it's approved tonight, that it's coming in perfect timing. I would like to make sure that we have proper signage, um, very bold, loud, um, stating, you know, especially in the park area mainly, um, of what is expected of our citizens, so we don't run into any issues like that. I have been to a couple of parks since it's been nicer, um, my nephew plays on a traveling baseball league and they do not have very good signage, but it is enforced, just citizens aren't aware of that. And I think that we're gonna have, um, better success and less people upset if we are informing our citizens of the policy or the ordinance of, um, what is expected of them. So I want to thank the park, uh, or the parks, um, park board for taking consideration for this, um, ordinance. I also want to thank Zach Moser for taking the time to also, um, help push this and be the backing of this because it's, you know, the one thing that's so important is, one, our, our children are safe, um, but also that they're involved in the activities that are being provided to them. But also they have clean air while they're either playing at the parks or in a sport that they're, uh, participating in. So I want to thank, um, everybody who was involved in helping bring this to service. Including you, Attorney Wood.
Any other discussion? I have a motion for bill number thirty-five eighty-nine.
I would move to approve bill number thirty-five eighty-nine, is that easy? Okay.
You're gonna say it slower next time?
No, I didn't have my phone up. I didn't have it up here and I was kind of trying to find on the slide.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
This time, I will call for the vote, there's no further discussion.
Sure.
Sure.
I'll take some.
All right. Alderman Siskas.
Yes.
Alderman Williams.
Yes.
And Alderman Boyd Jack.
Yes.
Next up is bill number thirty-five ninety.
Bill number thirty-five ninety, an ordinance adding provisions prohibiting smoking on the city properties and specifically in public parks to the codes of the city of Salem, Missouri.
Do you have a motion for bill number thirty-five ninety?
I move to approve bill number thirty-five ninety.
I'll second.
Any discussion? I'll call for the vote, Alderman Siskas.
Yes.
Alderman Williams.
Yes.
And Alderman Boyd Jack.
Yes.
Next up is bill number thirty-five ninety-one.
Bill number thirty-five ninety-one, an ordinance adding provisions prohibiting smoking on city properties and specifically in public parks to the codes of the city of Salem, Missouri.
Do you have a motion for bill number thirty-five ninety-one?
Move to approve, all right, bill number thirty-five ninety-one?
Second.
There's no further discussion? I will call for the vote, Alderman Siskas.
Yes.
Alderman Williams.
Yes.
And Alderman Boyd Jack.
Yes.
Next up is bill number thirty-five ninety-two.
Bill number thirty-five ninety-two, an ordinance adding provisions prohibiting smoking on city properties and specifically in public parks to the codes of the city of Salem, Missouri.
Do you have a motion for bill number thirty-five ninety-two?
Move to approve bill number thirty-five ninety-two.
Second.
Any discussion? I'll ask this city every bill, okay?
Okay.
Alderman Siskas.
Yes.
Alderman Williams.
Yes.
And Alderman Boyd Jack.
Yes.
Next up, bill number thirty-five ninety-three.
Bill number thirty-five ninety-three, an ordinance adding provisions prohibiting smoking on city properties and specifically in public parks to the codes of the city of Salem, Missouri.
Do you have a motion for bill number thirty-five ninety-three?
Move to approve bill number thirty-five ninety-three.
Second.
Any discussion? I will call for the vote, Alderman Siskas.
Yes.
Alderman Williams.
Yes.
And Alderman Boyd Jack.
Yes.
Bill number, next up, bill number thirty-five ninety-four.
Bill number thirty-five ninety-four, an ordinance adding provisions prohibiting smoking on city properties and specifically in public parks to the codes of the city of Salem, Missouri.
Do you have a motion for bill number thirty-five ninety-four?
I move to approve bill number thirty-five ninety-four.
Second.
With this one discuss- discussing, um, posting of signs, um, can we have it measured out to where it says something along lines of no smoking beyond this point? Since we are putting actual footage on the parameters of where they can, like specifically the playground and.
We can look at that, I mean, it's gonna vary by location, but we can look at that, so.
That way somebody's like, why do I know where fifteen feet, you know what I mean? So, just to be more specific.
But like, we'll look at it on a, location by location.
Okay. Yes, I'm very thankful for that, Mayor, thank you so much for considering that.
I'm gonna call for the vote, Alderman Siskas.
Yes.
Alderman Williams.
Yes.
And Alderman Boyd Jack.
Yes.
Next up is bill number thirty-five ninety-five.
Bill number thirty-five ninety-five, an ordinance adding provisions prohibiting smoking on city properties and specifically public parks to the codes of the city of Salem, Missouri.
Do you have a motion for bill number thirty-five ninety-five?
I'll move to approve bill number thirty-five ninety-five.
Second.
Any discussion? I'll call for the vote, Alderman Siskas.
Yes.
Alderman Williams.
Yes.
And Alderman Boyd Jack.
Yes.
Next up is bill number thirty-five ninety-six.
Bill number thirty-five ninety-six, an ordinance adding provisions prohibiting smoking on city properties and specifically public parks to the codes of the city of Salem, Missouri.
Do you have a motion for bill number thirty-five ninety-six?
Move to approve bill number thirty-five ninety-six.
Second.
Any discussion? I'll call for the vote, Alderman Siskas.
Yes.
Alderman Williams.
Yes.
Alderman Boyd Jack.
Yes.
Next up is bill number thirty-five ninety-seven.
Bill number thirty-five ninety-seven, an ordinance adding provisions prohibiting smoking on the city properties and specifically in public parks to the codes of the city of Salem, Missouri.
Do you have a motion for bill number thirty-five ninety-seven?
I'll move to approve bill number thirty-five ninety-seven.
Second.
Any discussion? I will call for the vote, Alderman Siskas.
Yes.
Alderman Williams.
Yes.
And Alderman Boyd Jack.
Yes.
Next up is bill number thirty-five ninety-eight.
Bill number thirty-five ninety-eight, an ordinance adding provisions prohibiting smoking on city properties and specifically in public parks to the codes of the city of Salem, Missouri.
Do you have a motion for bill number thirty-five ninety-eight?
I'll move to approve bill number thirty-five ninety-eight.
Second.
Pretty have nightmares of saying that word, eh? Any discussion? I will call for the vote, Alderman Siskas.
Yes.
Alderman Williams.
Yes.
And Alderman Boyd Jack.
Yes.
Next up, bill number thirty-five ninety-nine.
Bill number thirty-five ninety-nine, an ordinance adding provisions prohibiting, prohibiting smoking on city properties and specifically in public parks to the codes of the city of Salem, Missouri.
Do you have a motion for bill number thirty-five ninety-nine?
I will move to approve bill number thirty-five ninety-nine.
Second.
Any discussion? I will call for the vote, Alderman Siskas.
Yes.
Alderman Williams.
Yes.
The, the intention. Alderman Boyd Jack.
Yes.
Uh, next up is the first and second reading of bill number, we'll do the first one, bill number thirty-six hundred.
Bill number thirty-six hundred, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to sign amendment number one to task order number fourteen pertaining to an agreement between the city of Salem, Missouri and CM Archer Group, PC dated February three, twenty twenty for engineering design services related to the Clean Water Engineering Report Grant. Facility plan I and I evaluation, permission to read. Second read.
Yes, please.
Bill number thirty-six hundred, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to sign amendment number one to task order number fourteen pertaining to an agreement between the city of Salem, Missouri and CM Archer Group, PC dated February three, twenty twenty for engineering design services related to the Clean Water Engineering Report Grant Facility Plan I and I eval- evaluation.
Thank you.
So this is requesting an extension, so we received a small grant to do I and I, so info and infiltration studies on our sewer lines. Due to the relatively dry conditions over the last year, we not have the peak flow events that would enable the sampling to, to occur and to monitor this. So, um, this is just the required, this is basically been approved through the Missouri Department of National Resources. This is actually extending the contract to do so.
Yeah, I would move to approve task order fourteen, amendment one between city of Salem and CM Archer Group. I'll second.
Any further discussion? I will call for the vote, Alderman Williams.
Yes.
Alderman Boyd Jack.
Yes.
And Alderman Siskas.
Yes.
Next up is reports of city officials, boards, and committees, who's probably, you're at first?
I have no report, please, thank you.
I'll try to keep mine short, uh, the only thing I gotta report on is Parsons Chiropractic will be having their one-year celebration, patient appreciation on Friday, March the first, from four to seven P M. Mark your calendars, there'll be local, there'll be food vendors and drawings and I want you to have a lot of fun. That's all I have tonight. I'm gonna, I'm, I'm, I'm just gonna squeeze her in right before Joe.
We didn't, yeah, we just didn't have an announcement, I was wondering about that.
Yeah.
It's on the report side, yeah.
Stacy wants to keep up.
Yes. I'll just run it added to the reports, it makes it easier.
Finance?
Yes. It's your time to shine.
Sally can pull up the finance second.
Back at the time.
Yeah. Literally. Want to go straight to the graph?
Hey, yes, please. This is just an update on our sales tax revenue where we're at through the end of February. So February tax revenues are down three point five percent compared to this February of last year. And then year-to-date, we are down one percent compared to same timeframe as last year, and that's from July through February. On general fund, sales tax revenues year-to-date through February, we have brought in one point four million with three hundred and sixty-five thousand, of that being the additional one percent sales tax. And then parks and rec, it does say July through January, but it really is July through February. Um, sales tax revenues year-to-date has brought in around three hundred and eighty-three thousand. And then capital improvement, also, this is July through February, has brought in five hundred and eleven thousand. And then on the graph, that dotted line is the one, with the one percent additional sales tax that we are bringing in. Okay, no questions, we'll move on. She's electric use, or utility usage in revenues. Electric kilowatt hours sold is around thirty point four million kilowatt hours. That is down five percent compared to same timeframe as last year, and this is July through January. And electric revenues build is a little over four point three million. And in our purchase of power, we have paid just over two point six million. That is around a hundred and ninety-four thousand less than what we spent the same time as last year. And then on water consumption build, seventy-two point three million gallons. That's down sixteen percent compared to same timeframe as last year. And then water revenues build is at around four hundred and eighty-one thousand. Sewer consumptions build, we build out around sixty-five point three million gallons. That is down eleven percent compared to same timeframe as last year. Revenues build is at six hundred and twenty-five thousand. If you don't have any questions, we'll move on to the next page. And this is a list of all the city funds. And then again, um, the beginning balance is as of July first of this fiscal year. Then the columns, revenues, and then expenses, and this is through the end of January. And then transfers in and out of those funds, and then our ending balance as of the end of January. And then if you scroll down to the bottom of the page, right now, all, the total of all fund balances is at nine point one million. Okay, then the next page is, okay, so this is just a, the, shows the fund revenues and expenditures compared to what we have budgeted. And so far on revenues, we've brought in fifty percent of what we have budgeted. And on expenditures, we have expended forty-six percent of what we have budgeted. And this is through January, so we have fifty-eight percent of the budget year. And that is all I have, do you have any questions?
Any more, any questions? Thank you, Stacy. See if we can add her report to our list of reports. Next person up will be Chief Chase.
So the last week's been pretty busy, we, we've been working on itineraries with, uh, department heads. Basically, it's a, a list of objectives for the week, we follow up on the, at the end of the week to see where we're at and we've accomplished what we've set out to. If there's more support, more materials, more anything needed. I want to compliment Brent on a very comprehensive report. I'll run through that and I'll be as brief as I can because there's, there is quite a bit. But Brent has, he, he's caught that concept very well and, uh, his weekly reports are impeccable. So, starting with the electric, uh, we, uh, worked on re-reads with the water department. So, starting with the electric, uh, we worked on rereads with the water department. And I'll, I'll get to this a little bit more in-depth. We located an issue in E one, or I'm sorry, E two GeoCode for the city, it's broke along nineteen and thirty-two, I'm sorry, yeah, nineteen and thirty-two. Is everything east of nineteen, everything north of thirty-two? And what we found out was that there were some A M I gateway units that had water infiltration, so they weren't operating properly. We were able to do a diagnostic on that, and determine that, uh, the percentage of signal strength was not where it needed to be. Josh is currently working to get replacement, uh, gateway units, and so, we're working on that. We, we had a meeting on that this morning, on how we move forward with that. Electric department, uh, finished up where the street department left off with the Frisco Trailhead. The sign, uh, mounting poles currently, it's leveled out, there's some light landscaping done, the poles are installed, the sign's ready to go up as soon as, uh, Action Graphics completes the signage for the tram backer. And then him and another guy are working on that. Uh, we went over the streetlight order, identified areas of greatest need. And we're currently working on staff summary, uh, there's some, there's some training issues with that, that, where the department heads are. Uh, in times past, Mark took care of the staff summaries, and so, what we're doing now is we're pushing for the department heads to take care of their own staff summaries. So that, that's one, one more thing for them, one less thing for public works, but that allows public works to do other stuff as well. Located the streetlight issue on Jennifer, uh, Mastech, whenever they were running underground, they hit the secondary service line. So that's been identified, the fix on that is a little bit more complic- complicated, because all of that wiring underground is not in conduit. There are places where it's, it, it's very grade, but when you run a backhoe through it, so, it's just, it's not gonna withstand that. So Josh is gonna have me a, uh, solution to that problem, hopefully, uh, by tomorrow or Thursday. With, the city electric crews have been working with the other crews at Al Brown, completed, completion of the lighting project. Uh, they were a few feet short on conduit and on the supply lines, so we're working to get that remedied. Water rereads, uh, we're completed with the systems, the street and electric. And so as a part of that, we identified some problems with the water meters that we're working to correct. We still have some steel lid meters in place, and they don't hold A M I antennas as well as the poly lids. So, we're implementing a plan to replace those at three a week, starting with the easiest ones first, because the ones that are the toughest will require equipment being moved in. Some of those will, will have to be dug out, reset, um, some issues like that. The water department, uh, set a search cleanout at, uh, Henderson three hundred block. This was in relation to an Airbnb issue where a service line had collapsed. And, um, so, they had hired a private contractor to reset the line to the nearest connecting main. Myself, Donnie, um, she went with us on that one.
Josh, Josh, huh?
Yeah. And Josh went with us. So, and so it's a little more complicated than it sounds, you have to find the closest tie-in that will allow a drop, so that everything keeps moving in the right direction. And so the guys were able to identify, uh, the closest one, provided a cost savings to the, uh, homeowner, and they were able to get that set. We looked at, they're, we're reviewing currently, I met with Donnie on this yesterday, addition of a portable reader from NextGrid. Our rereads are kind of running high, and so, um, as a part of NextGrid, there is a, I guess, a subsidiary, ECA one that offers a handheld portable reader, we're gonna look at costs on that. And so what that would allow, would allow Will, who does service work, to actually just drive up close to that meter, and if he can't get a read pulled from it automatically, then he can, he can get out and do a, a physical read, but what we're attempting to do is keep these rereads to a minimal. Construction department, the salt bins are completed, totally done. Uh, council chambers, they continue to work on that, and I believe they have that pretty well vetted now. Uh, currently working on the metal roof park pavilion, getting that metal replaced. Uh, code enforcement, I met with Jared, uh, during this last week regarding our grease trap ordinance, we've been flowing a lot of bio solids into the white spot treatment plant. And so we're starting, we started with Sonic, because that was one that was identified as a primary contributor. They have their grease trap in place, they are, uh, he is educated in on proper cleaning schedules to make sure that we don't have a lot of bio solids going down our drains. From there, we moved, uh, we're gonna start with country mark, uh, to make sure they're in compliance in every restaurant along thirty-two. And make sure that they're in compliance with their grease trap, um, outflow and cleaning. Went over a work order for new construction at six oh four South Askins. This was another one of those projects that had been delayed a considerable amount of time. Locates were made, or were, I'm sorry, locates were called in, and a location for the pole, uh, was established by Josh. They'd set an original pole location, kind of what they wanted, if the city ordinance requires, that the pole will be set that a distance equivalent to the height of the pole out of the ground away from the home. And so, that had to be relocated, spoke to the homeowner today, and explained that situation, he's good with that, work order is completed, and will be, we're looking at having it done by Friday, and, uh, if not by Friday, Monday for sure. So, street departments, um, they did level ups, uh, for signage on Third Street. We were set to haul material to the sewer plant, or from the sewer plant to the, uh, city landfill site, but there was an issue with the disc, because we required to disc that, uh, sludge into the ground. And I say sludge, it's not like goopy, sloppy stuff, it's more like soil and reed, broken reed pieces, so it's, I mean, it's all like, I don't know, I wouldn't say, maybe organic, is that the right term?
Ish.
But it's, but it's dry.
It's dry, and it's within D N R compliance, we spoke with Archer about main, making sure that we were staying in compliance with D N R regs on that. Uh, clean ditches, pipes and drop-ins, and then we get the drop-in in front of Judson's completed? That, I know.
Oh, yes.
Okay, so that one.
No, no, I'm sorry, no, not Judson, no, there's still, construction is still.
Working on that one?
Yes.
Okay, so, it's been kind of spread thin with everything, but there, the, the good part of that is, is we're not moving them around so much, uh, and so they're completing projects, so the salt bin is done. So we won't be going back to that to tear out for council chambers is done, so we won't be going back to do additional tearouts. They leveled up all the digouts citywide, uh, trucking equipment maintenance. And mechanic did some repairs to several vehicles. Worked on the street department's tractor, uh, street department's spreader bed, sewer department disc, that was the issue there. Fixed the tower on the backhoe, worked on vehicle inventory, and that's the craft for the Purple Wave auction coming up, we have several vehicles going to that. And so we're kind of back and forth on, there's two vehicles still in question, I gotta get with Sally on that, to make sure that the ones that are going out, there's one in particular that really needs to go, but a viable replacement for that is extremely expensive, and so, we're just trying to figure out how we best do that. Uh, let's see, repaired the F one-fifties, water, our electric department's water pump, and, um, just oil change and regular service for, uh, two police vehicles. Cemetery crew worked, uh, with some cleanup, uh, funerals, grave filling, and, uh, to, did a, they put wheels on the morgue decks, and did a cemetery inspection, and then, um, did a shop cleanup, check, make sure that that is the end of that. That is it. Any questions?
Do we have summer help coming back already in line for the cemetery?
Not yet.
Okay.
Those are discussions we need to start for temporary.
Yeah. Oh, and to add to that, we have two interviews slated for tomorrow, for, one for the open, uh, sewer plant labor position, and then there's another for a lineman, a ground, it's a ground lineman, a groundsman position, so we have an interview set for that. We have, have two more applicants, but due to schedule conflicts, we weren't able to schedule them for this week. So, that's tomorrow at ten and one o'clock.
You mentioned, uh, there was one truck that needs to be replaced, but is extremely expensive to replace, is it like a specialty truck, or what do we?
Okay, so what that is, it's a, it looks like about a two-ton.
Yeah.
It's a single dual axle truck, but it, it was, it was homemade kind of design, but it, it only serves one purpose. And so, with our digger truck, it has a claw out on the front of it, on the front of the boom, and what that does is that will hold a pole in place, and so it's only one of those that we have that's capable, especially on some of the bigger poles. So, if it's sitting there holding a pole, like we had the one snapped off on MacArthur, you can't hold the pole and then drive back and get a pole. That's what that truck's capable of doing. So we have another truck that has a, a chain-driven gearbox that pulls poles up onto it, it puts them in kind of a ready position.
Yeah.
Because the length of a pole makes it hard to make corners with our pole trailer.
Oh, I get it.
And, uh, the pole trailer we have is one of the vehicles that's slated for going out, because it's, it's meant to end its service life, it's, it's about the only thing good on it, it's the axles and the tongue, and that's, that's just, that's being kind. So, the, this pole truck we have, we've had for twenty-seven years, and, um, the gearbox on it has an open, it's like an open primary. If anybody knows what, like the old genie or motorcycles were like, and, and so, it's not a caged unit, and so, it's just a, just kind of a safety hazard. And so, we're finding a viable alternative for that, uh, finding a truck that will do what that one does is kind of dicey. We're not, we're not finding anything that, that would serve as a good alternative at this point, so, still working that out.
Thank you for the detailed reports, I appreciate you looking at Jennifer Street over there.
Okay, yeah, I'm gonna watch you running in the dark, or anybody, for that matter.
Well, Sean's got a desk for it.
Yeah.
Melissa's not here to give full reports, all right? So, Alderman Cisco, you're up first.
Awesome. I love being first. Um, it sounds like the street department was very busy this week, Brent, so, I don't know if you've had a chance to make it over to, uh, seven hundred South MacArthur. I think it would be seven hundred South MacArthur, I'm trying to picture like which way the front of the house is, I think it's facing MacArthur. Um, one with the Spring Creek parking issue.
Gibbs, yes.
Gibbs, yes. Um, have you guys been able to make it over there and see what?
We did refresh the paint.
Perfect.
You know.
I'll see, I'll follow up with him and see how that works.
Right, yeah.
I've been checking on that.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
And so far, we haven't had any issues that, that were reported, but I haven't seen any non-compliance either.
Perfect, and maybe that's all we need, it was just a little freshening of the paint so people could see it, so.
It was pretty dim, it really was, yeah.
I appreciate you and your mid following up on that and getting that done, I'll follow up with the resident here in a couple, um, days, just to see if it's still working, it's mainly probably on the weekends when they're busy, but I'll follow up and see how that's going, so thank you guys for doing that. Uh, we will be having a community involvement meeting, hopefully March twenty-first at five P M in this room exactly. Right now, we believe we have a quorum, so, um, if you are on that committee and you think I should be there, you definitely should be, so please show up. Um, if you want to still join the community involvement, I do not have a set number of people that I can or cannot have on there, more the merrier. You wanna be involved in your community and you want to make a difference, please come, get ahold of me, email me at my email, it's kscisco@salemmo.com. Um, the reason I have to look at Sally is because I have four different emails that I have to keep track of, so, um, verifying that, but you can also, um, submit your interest into the administrator's office as well, and they'll get ahold of me, and I will, um, you know, get ahold of you and make sure you actually wanna be on the committee. Um, Jason Hogan, I wanna thank him very much for all of his hard work that he's put into the airport, um, fuel pump, he has been there and spent several hours, um, you know, making sure that that pump is up and going, I have heard from, um, flight pilots is what I would call them. Um, they are able to use that pump, so that is awesome, and, um, very much appreciated by those guys. I know that they have mentioned several times that there's been pi- people flying in who have needed fuel and not able to get fuel, so, you know, it's different than being in your car not having fuel, and it's a whole nother ballgame when you're in the air and you don't have enough fuel, so, um, very much appreciated of Jason Hogan for putting a lot of time into that. Lastly, we are here at seven o'clock, but The Voice starts tonight, and if you know Devin Sutterfield, I went to high school with him, he is actually gonna be on the show, so, good luck to him, and hopefully it's much success, and I hope that if you, um, do not have The Voice recorded, that you follow up and see how he does tonight, because, uh, he is a Salemite and with a very beautiful voice and talent, so I wish him all the best of luck while he goes through this journey. That's all I have. I know four items, move before I remember something.
Ah, you will. Ah, next up, Alderman Bullerjack.
I'll try to be brief, um, so the city clerk and I attended the Missouri Municipal League Legislative Conference last week in Jefferson City, where they shared some of the bills of municipal interest, um, with us, that's been filed in this year's general session, and, um, that may have a, either a positive or a negative impact on cities. And, um, so the biggest conversation was, was the sales tax exemption on food items. Um, there's eight bills filed this year, I believe six in the House and two in the Senate, um, where they would eliminate sales tax on food items. Currently, there's a three percent, about three percent, uh, state sales tax reduction on those, so, we're able to easily calculate how much that could impact us, and for twenty-twenty-three, um, about thirty-six percent of our sales tax revenue for the city, uh, was from food items. So that's gonna be a very significant impact if that goes through in the state level. What you have until first, uh, sometime May is when the end of the general session happens, so we'll keep a close eye on those. There's other sales tax exemptions that they're looking at as well, and, um, there's some like personal hygiene items, diapers, vitamins, and medical devices, other things like that. That's gonna be a little bit harder to calculate the impact on, just because those are already taxed at a full tax rate for both state and local. So that's gonna be a little bit hard, um, to gauge there. But we had a meeting with Representative Cookland there at the Capitol in his office, um, had a, had a good meeting, and, um, got to share, um, some of the bills that, uh, we had concerns with and, and, and all that. But overall, it was, um, a very, um, good educational experience, so, thank you both for attending.
Last but not least, Alderman Williams.
I have nothing to report.
I have something to report, head's report. Um, at the community involvement in meeting, committee meeting on the twenty-first, I just wanna put this out there, that if you are, you know, we're going to be discussing fireworks, and that will determine if we can or cannot do a firework display this year. So, if you're interested in being a part of that, if, if such as doing a donation, we're gonna be looking at potentially having, um, food vendors there, um, if we're able to do this. So if that's something that you think you wanna be a part of, please attend that meeting, you're gonna help us, um, move on that a little quicker. But I, we desperately want to have a firework display, but we are cutting it close to being able to actually have one, so, um, if you are able to let off fireworks, you're a pyro engineer, please attend that meeting, because those are discussions that we're gonna be having with you, and hopefully, um, asking for bids very soon. If you're looking at being a sponsor or a donator, we, I believe, set aside ten thousand dollars for fireworks, uh, this year, if I'm remembering correctly the budget. That's either close or close enough, so we'll definitely have that number at the community involvement meeting, but please, if you're wanting to be a part of that, attend that meeting at that time.
Sure.
I really want fireworks, so I really want people to attend.
We're only about twelve thousand dollars short so far.
Yes.
Now, last but not least, uh, I need a motion to go into closed session for personnel and, uh, real estate.
I will move to go into closed session for personnel and real estate.
I was saying.
I'll say it.
I will call for the vote, Alderman Cisco.
Yes.
Alderman Bullerjack.
Yes.
And Alderman Williams.
Yes.
Thank you all for attending.